Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our monthly meeting. Please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Rabbi Koller.
Friends, I'm actually going to start off with invoking the memory of my mother, who had very wise words every once in a while to me, especially when I was an adolescent. As she was trying to talk to me, I would somehow manage to try to talk over and talk back. And she would put up one finger and she would say, the word silent and listen had the exact same letters. After the blessing, write it down, you'll see what I'm talking about. Indeed, that's what I want you to focus in on tonight. I want us to take a moment of silence, be silent for a second, and listen. The voice you heard is your own, but the voices within reflect the voices that you hear from beyond. Indeed, halfway around the world, we hear voices of cries, of anguish, of people being displaced because of the terrible situation of war and bloodshed and violence. If we listen to our own voice within, we know that our family's story is very similar. We might have been born here, our parents might have been born here, but somewhere along our family line, we came from another place. Maybe it was violence that brought us over, our family over, it might have been hunger that brought them over, or poverty that brought them over, or the promise of what tomorrow could bring that brought them over. But that sense of being displaced, of not having a rootedness, is who we are at our core, that we build our lives accordingly. For some, our history has brought us here by force, not by our own will. By others, it was a choice. In our own community, our voices speak to each one of us here. Some are applauding the efforts to build a better tomorrow. Some are applauding the work that's at hand, that's going on now, of the human dignity that we instill in each other by seeing the face of God in another. And some are crying out in pain, some are crying out in anger, some are languishing in a sense of silence that we can't comprehend because we yearn for something to make our lives stable. A source of blessing give us the power to be silent and to listen and to hear the words of others, give us the courage to respond, the dignity that all humanity deserves. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator McGill.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under power, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Before we move to our legislative conference, we have some presentations to make this evening. For the past few years, we've included in our budget a grant program that assists our volunteer fire departments in their purchases of essential equipment that they need to serve their communities. At this time, I'd like to invite legislator Frazoni, vice chair of our Committee on Public Safety and Fire Fighting, and our director of emergency management, Mark LaViolet, as well as representatives from our local fire departments to join me in the wall for those presentations.
So tonight, the Schenectady County Legislature has awarded grants to local volunteer fire departments through the county's Fire Service Improvement Grant Fund. The fire service grants are meant to help local departments in their response to unusual storms, natural disasters, and everyday events. These departments provide services that are crucial to our community, and on behalf of the Schenectady County Legislature, I would like to thank all of our first responders for their hard work and dedication in ensuring the safety of all county residents. First check is to the village school fire department.
Fire department.
Turn around so they can see.
Applause, fire department. You can tell fire department? Got it through? Down? Schenectady Fire Department and Thomas Clark. You'd like to turn around for a moment?
I'd just like to invite legislators McDonald, Hughes, and McGary to the wall for our next presentation, to the representatives of the ancient order of Hibernians.
Also, if there are any other members who are not obviously Irish or just wish they were, you're welcome to join us at this time. No takers, okay? No problem. Ah, we're always Irish. So... I can, do you want to take a chunk of this? No, it's long. I might edit. "A resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians together with the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians and all immigrants from Ireland and their descendants throughout the county of Schenectady on the occasion of the Feast of St. Patrick, March 17." "Whereas the county of Schenectady is rightly proud of its many Irish residents, whether they are immigrants or descendants of immigrants, as well as their many contributions to the general welfare of Schenectady County, and whereas the John F. Kennedy Division One Ancient Order of Hibernians together with the John F. Kennedy Division One Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians has in fact contributed to the general welfare of the county of Schenectady for more than 142 years, and 128 years respectively, by its many financial donations and the performance of various good works for worthy causes and deserving organizations. And whereas 2022 marks the 50th anniversary of Bloody Sunday, when 26 unarmed civilians were shot and killed by British soldiers during a protest that began peacefully in Derry, Bloody Sunday became one of the most significant and deadly injustices to take place during the troubles and exacerbated the conflict in Northern Ireland. And whereas on June 15, 2010, then Prime Minister David Cameron, while addressing the House of Commons, apologized on behalf of the British government, saying that the events that took place on Bloody Sunday were unjustified, unjustifiable, and wrong. And whereas accountability and justice for the victims of Bloody Sunday would represent one step toward addressing Northern Ireland's legacy of violence, promote reconciliation, and foster intercommunity relations, as well as integration in civil and societal structures to promote communication and mutual understanding, now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature supports dialogue and negotiation between all parties to maintain peace, supports the full implementation of the Good Friday Agreement to ensure peace and stability on the island of Ireland, supports efforts that the involved parties fully implement the Northern Ireland Protocol as agreed upon in the interest of maintaining peace and stability on the island of Ireland, supports efforts that the people of Northern Ireland foster further integration across communities and break down cultural, religious, and social barriers that remain, supports the devolved government of Northern Ireland and recognizes the devolved government as a successful outcome and tenet of the Good Friday Agreement. And therefore be it resolved, and this is the most important part, that the Schenectady County Legislature declares that on March 17, 2022, St. Patrick's Day shall be celebrated throughout the county of Schenectady in memory of those who lost their lives on Bloody Sunday, Northern Ireland, in 1972, and in recognition of the many contributions and good works of Irish-American people everywhere." Thank you, men. And they have a little celebration, I think, at the hall on the 17th, just a little bit. Isn't there a little something going on?
Thank you, Assembly legislators and my fellow legislators, fellow Hibernians. I would like to invite everyone up to the hall on next Thursday. We're having a drive-in, the planning for the usual St. Patrick's Day festivities. We're kind of overshadowed by COVID earlier in the year, but we hope to have our public license back again by 2023. A drive-through, corned beef and cabbage, drive-through. Be there early, they go quick.
And I would like to say that we usually have, like, the Irish step dancers with us, but unfortunately since we, and they were ready to come on Tuesday night, but unfortunately since we weren't here on Tuesday night due to the natural gas situation in the building, on short notice, they just weren't able to pull their schedules together, their kids in school, and, you know, they had that date marked on the calendar, but not necessarily Thursday night. So we miss them, we missed them last year, and we hope to see them here next year, God willing. Thank you all for coming, see you on St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. We have a little more ceremonial resolution this evening. It's Resolution 28-22 that's going to be coming to the floor out of the Rules Committee. I'd like to ask legislator Olszlo to read that into the record at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't always read our resolutions through, but this is really meaningful, and I know a lot of people spent time putting it together very carefully. And I think the history of everyone involved is so important to recognize how we ended where we are today. This is a resolution concerning support for Ukraine against ongoing Russian aggression. Whereas on January 21, 1990, more than 400 Ukrainians joined hands and called for independence from the Soviet Union, forming a human chain that stretched 400 miles from the city of Ivano-Frankivs to Kiev. And whereas on August 24, 1991, a date that is still celebrated as Ukraine's official Independence Day, the Ukrainian parliament declared independence from Russia. And whereas on December 1, 1992, 92% of Ukrainian citizens voted in favor of forming a nation independent from Russia. And on December 26, 1991, the Soviet Union officially dissolved. And whereas in 1992, Ukraine formally established a positive relationship with the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, NATO, and became the first member state of the Commonwealth of Independent States to join the Partnership for Peace Program. And whereas over 70 years, NATO has relied on peace, diplomacy, and open and transparent communication over conflicts in order to ensure safety and stability for over 1 billion people. And whereas on February 20, 2014, the Russian Federation, seeking to deny the free will of the Ukrainian people, invaded the independent state of Ukraine and has instigated a deadly separatist war that has destabilized the region and killed thousands. And whereas over the last several years, Ukraine has been forced to confront hostile and unwarranted acts by Russia with the ongoing attempted annexation of Crimea and conflict in the Donbass region. And whereas, since the beginning of the conflict with Russia, at least 14,000 Ukrainians have been killed and millions displaced defending their homeland. And whereas on February 23, 2022, despite strong international opposition and imposed sanctions, the Russian military began an unprovoked brutal assault on the peaceful people of Ukraine, inflicting terror and violence upon individuals and destroying the homes and businesses of millions. And whereas the United States and United Nations recognize Ukraine as an independent sovereign nation that has been unjustly invaded and threatened, now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature stands in solidarity with Ukraine and commends the strength, excuse me, commends the strength and courage of the Ukrainian people in their pursuit of protecting their independence, democracy, and most importantly, their homeland. And therefore be it further resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature condemns the unnecessary actions of Russia and its devastating ongoing assault, and urges the United States federal government and its allies to take every appropriate action to aid and relieve those who are suffering in Ukraine.
Thank you, legislator Olszlo. We'll now move to our legislative conference in the Rules Committee, to be chaired by legislator McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I call the Rules Committee to order. First item is Resolution 14, a resolution concerning support for Ukraine against ongoing Russian aggression.
Move to report.
We have a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Next item, Resolution 15, a resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians together with the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians and all immigrants from Ireland and their descendants throughout the county of Schenectady on the occasion of the Feast of St. Patrick, March 17.
Move to report.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Next item, Resolution 16, a resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of chaplain at the Glendale Nursing Facility. A motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Our next item is a resolution to appoint a commissioner of the Board of Elections for Schenectady County. We have two resolutions. Resolution 17 is appointing Amy Hild first.
Move to report.
We have a motion. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Next resolution is 18, is a resolution to appoint a commissioner of the Board of Elections for Schenectady County.
Move to report.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Our next item is Resolution 19, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Schenectady County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board regarding parcels to be added to agricultural District Number One.
Move to report.
We have a motion. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is reported. Our next item is Resolution 20, a resolution confirming the appointment of Adrian S. Silva to the position of manager of senior and long-term care services. Adrian's information is in the packet, she's here tonight with us.
Move to report.
A motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Initiative is moved to the agenda. Our next item is Resolution 21, a resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the Glendale Nursing Home.
Move to report.
A motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is Resolution 22, a resolution establishing the rates of compensation for election workers employed by Schenectady County Board of Elections, which we approve every year. Any discussion?
Any change in compensation, Mr. Chair?
Do you want, someone want to speak on that?
Push the little green button.
Yep, we got it. And we did actually increase our rates this year. It was to kind of come in line with some of our area counties. We have a rate increase of $35 per shift, and their shift is 17 hours, so it equates to about a $2 an hour raise for our staff. Also this year, there was legislation that changed early voting hours. Now all of our early voting hours are going to be eight-hour days. We did used to have on our weekends was a six-hour day, so everybody has been equalized, and we have structured their early voting schedule to, or pay to be... and we have structured their early voting schedule to, or pay to be consistent with an eight-hour day.
Any change in our early voting sites?
At this time, we have contacted all of the sites, we do have one that, that is, we're working with, but we think that there should not be any changes this coming fall, well, actually summer and fall.
So all of the early voting hours now will be nine to five, so Saturday through Sunday will be nine to five, except for Monday, Wednesday will be noon to eight. So all the weekends will, will go from nine to two to nine to five. So we're hoping that will just continue to improve access for all of our voters.
Any other questions?
A motion and a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is Resolution 23, a resolution recommending that the Board of Trustees of Schenectady County Public Library System adopt a policy eliminating late fines.
I'll move to report, could I make a comment?
Sure.
I've been working on this project and I just want to say a few words. I'm thrilled for the Schenectady County Public Library as they embark on this exciting new chapter. And I want to acknowledge the hard work and thoughtful contributions of the members of the Library Board of Trustees Fine Free Subcommittee, Carmel Patrick, Randy Fine, Deb Askebar, and of course, the extraordinary Julie McDonald. I also want to thank Karen Bradley, Beth DiMideo, and Devon Hedges for their expertise and support. So as we all know, libraries spread joy, they provide useful information, they build a sense of community, and they encourage a love of reading at an early age. When patrons begin accumulating fines and fees, they become less inclined to visit the library. Assessing fines tends to drive away the very people in our community who stand to benefit the most from free library resources. In Schenectady County, 26%, 26% of cardholders, which equates to over 12,000 people, are effectively blocked from borrowing books in our community because they owe $5 or more in fines. Removing financial barriers that disproportionately affect low-income households will encourage people to come back to the library. By eliminating fines for overdue materials, we aim to provide equitable access to all residents. Studies have shown that small fines have no impact on return rates. Patrons will still be responsible for returning items to the library in a timely manner, but fines are not consistent with the fundamental mission of libraries, which is to serve the public with information and knowledge. It is not the library's role to demand accountability, the library's role is to encourage lifelong learning, exploration, and innovation. Our community is stronger and healthier when people have access to the programs, services, and materials they need to pursue their educational, career, family, and life goals. So I stand in strong support of this recommendation and I hope the members of this body will join me in voting yes later this evening on tonight's resolution. And I'd like to make a motion.
Any other discussion? You have a motion and a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Initiative is reported to the meeting agenda. Resolution 24, a resolution confirming the appointments of persons to various boards, councils, and commissions. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Initiative is reported and the Committee on Rules is now closed.
Thank you, legislator McDonald. It's now time to open privilege of the floor, members of the public who are present this evening, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record and try to limit your comments to three minutes, anyone here wishing to speak during privilege of the floor? Anyone wishing to address this body through privilege of the floor? Yes, sir.
My name is Diablo, I'm going to talk about the county library, I mean, the county museum. But first, I want to make another comment. The first time I came here, there was a man here who represent an association of counties. And he said to you that the figure of the county, it was not necessary. It shouldn't exist. The other thing I remember about the county is that for the past 30 years, the county wanted to tear down this building and build something else because it's not practical anymore. Now I'm going to my main comment. In 2004 or 2005, the county museum asked the community for input. On the agenda was to end showing art, contemporary art, paint art. So they have a meeting at seven in the morning and on the weekend. So you can imagine to have a meeting at seven in the morning and on the weekend. I went there and there was only two people from the museum and me. No quorum, no input from the community. It has been 20 years since the last time the museum showed contemporary art, paint art. David Buick, he wants to change the name of the city. And Ray Gillen, he wants to change the name of the street where the museum is located because there is no attendance. So you can ask yourself, why is no attendance? And the answer is very simple, demographics. What these two men wants to tell you is that the past is the past. And it is no room in people's present mind. And that Schenectady is not as connected anymore. There are too many Negroes, Gallanes, and too many Negroes coming from New York City to live here. And they don't give a damn about the museum. They don't give a damn about General Electric, Westinghouse, Edison. They don't care. So I wanted to ask the county committee who take care of these matters of art to use their power to open up the county museum doors so the art community, the people that do paint art, we can exhibit again. Let me give you an input. The addition to the Schenectady Central Library, if you know what I'm talking about, it only costs $1 million in some change. And the new library up State Street, if you know what I'm talking about, even though it looks like the dollar store next door, it only costs $1 million in some change. There are 53 million dollars from the rescue plan. You can use that money to buy, to build a new museum for modern art, simple as that, it won't cost you nothing. I don't know if there is any type of conflict or interest, but if you wanted to do something for the art community, to help the art community, it is a good time to do that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hi, I just wanted to take a second, I'm Donna Pennell, I'm the Schenectady Film Commissioner. And I just wanted to thank everybody here that supported film Schenectady, as you know, we just had a major production in town. We're growing, we're growing. 11,000, over 11,500 room stays in the last 18 months. Millions of dollars have been spent locally, restaurants, dining, shopping. The casino was a big hit with our, with our last group that was in. And lots of local hires, so I'm really looking forward to continue growing the area along with the capital region. And again, I just wanted to thank everybody here for their support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? We also invited members of the public to make comments through a form on our website, let's ask clerk to read any comments received into the record at this time.
There were no submissions received.
Thank you, seeing no submissions, privilege of the floor is now closed. And I now call toward the March regular meeting of the county legislature, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Present.
Mr. McGill?
Present.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Present.
Mr. Cuomo?
Present.
Mr. Petterney?
Present.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Here.
Mr. Hess? Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Present.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Jazinski?
Present.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes from the meetings held on September 8th, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk, could we deliver the list of reports received?
We have received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, the Department of Ways and Measures, and the county clerk.
Thank you. Under committee reports, legislator Pratt with reports from the Committee on Environmental Conservation, Renewable Energy in Parks.
The Committee on Environmental Conservation, Renewable Energy in Parks met on February 28th, 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolutions 39 and 40.
Thank you. Legislator Hughes, reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on February 28th of 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolution Number 41.
Let's, also let's with reports from the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Committee on Health and, Health, Housing, and Human Services met on February 28th, 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolution 42.
Thank you. Legislator Frizzoni reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on February 28th, 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolutions 43 and 44.
Thank you. Legislator Petterney reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on February 28th, 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolutions 45, 46, and 47.
Thank you. Legislator Frizzoni with reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting met on February 28th, 2022 and reported to the agenda Resolutions 48 and 49.
Thank you. Legislator McDonald reports from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported the agenda Resolutions 28 through 38.
Thank you, sir, also reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
Committee on Ways and Means met on February 28th and reported to the agenda Resolutions 39, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 47, and 49.
Thank you, sir. Our first item this evening is Resolution 28-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
Resolution concerning support for Ukraine against ongoing Russian aggression.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three nay, or three absent, sorry.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 29-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
Resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians together with the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians and all immigrants from Ireland and their descendants throughout the county of Schenectady on the occasion of the Feast of St. Patrick, March 17.
Any discussion? Hearing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 30-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
Resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of chaplain at the Glendale Nursing Facility.
Any discussion? Hearing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
I'd like to say a few words. Pastor Dix, who is being appointed to the chaplain position at the Glendale Nursing Facility, comes from a long line of spiritual leaders within the Schenectady County community. Her parents founded Refreshing Springs Church of God in Christ Community Church in 1955 and it's actually located on Jordetta Dix Plaza, which is named after her mother. This church has been a pillar of spiritual leadership in our community since their inception. They provided leadership in civil, civil rights, they provided leadership in daycare and community care for young people and children in the community. So I thought it would be great, she would be a great spiritual leader and chaplain for Glendale Facility because she does come from a long line, she did take over the mantle of the church 10 years ago. And she has been leading that church, that's still one of the spiritual leaders in our community since then. So it's an honor to speak on this resolution as she is being appointed and I vote aye on this resolution, thank you.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Aye.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. I'd like to thank legislator McGill for bringing Pastor Dix on board, thank you, sir. Our next item is Resolution 31-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to appoint a commissioner of the Board of Elections for Schenectady County.
Any discussion? Hearing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
With great recognition of the immense work and wonderful job they both do, yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 32-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to appoint a commissioner of the Board of Elections for Schenectady County.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 33-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution adopting recommendations of the Schenectady County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board regarding parcels to be added to agricultural District Number One.
Any discussion? Legislator Hughes.
Mr. Chair, there are two parcels of land, both are located in West Glenville. They are almost contiguous to one another and both are used for the raising of cattle. And they certainly will fit into the agricultural district and continue the, the effort that the county has underway to support our agricultural community and expand the important role that agriculture plays in the county. So I recommend that we vote aye on this.
Sir, any further discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill? Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Petterney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrowlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 34-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Adrian S. Silva to the position of manager of senior and long-term care services.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields is absent, Mr. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent, Ms. Gada is absent, Mr. Frizzoni? Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty-two, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the Glendale Nursing Home.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty-two, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution establishing the rates of compensation for election workers employed by the Schenectady County Board of Elections.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
I'll abstain. My wife occasionally works at the polls.
Mr. Hughes?
First off, we thank Legislative McGary. We thank your wife for working at the polls. We need more people to do that. It's a long and thankless job. I vote aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Eleven aye, one abstain, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty-two, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution recommending that the Board of Trustees of the Schenectady County Public Library System adopt a policy eliminating life fees.
Any discussion?
I just want to commend Sarah Pratt, Legislature Ms. Pratt, and everybody else from the Board of Directors of the Library and Ms. McDonald, excuse me, for the hard work that they did. Nobody should be kept from knowledge. I think it's important that we give everybody the opportunity to continue to learn. And I think by doing this, we open up the door for many, many people. And I just want to commend everybody for their hard work. I think this is a great initiative, and I'm happy to be a part of it, and I vote aye.
Any further discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo?
I would simply add to those comments and say that knowledge is critical to the health and well-being of our community,
and I resoundingly vote aye.
Ms. Pratt?
A resounding aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
I will add my voice to the chorus of congratulations and thank yous to the board and all who worked so hard on this measure, yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution Thirty-eight dash twenty-two, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointments of persons to various boards, councils, and commissions.
Any discussion? Let's see, Hughes.
Say the same thing every time we do this. We, we are very appreciative of all the efforts of people who serve on these boards and commissions and provide their insight and their wisdom and assist us in governing and implementing the many, many services that Schenectady County provides, and they do so with no compensation whatsoever. So we really appreciate their, their volunteerism and their commitment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary? Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution Thirty-nine dash twenty-two, sponsors Legislature Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the conversion of certain streetlights to light admitting diode lights.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution Forty-dash twenty-two, sponsors Legislature Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution, a resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the Schenectady County Environmental Advisory Council.
Any discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution Forty-one dash twenty-two, sponsors Legislature Hughes. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the purchase of property at Two Thirty-four South Ferry Street in the city of Schenectady.
Any discussion? Let's see, Hughes.
We laid this out and discussed it in the committee, but just as a refresher, this is an additional parcel of property that is contiguous to the, the various parcels that the county has assembled over the past couple of months with the intent of holding these in trust for the community college. The county is the holder of property at the college and has a share in the buildings. The idea here is to be able to allow this, the college to have room to grow to, into downtown because it is landlocked going in the other direction because of the Mohawk River and the flood plain there. So this is part of that same project, and the sequencing of some of the properties just didn't, didn't come at a time that made it possible for them to be brought to us all at once. So I, I urge your approval of this. It's consistent with the continuation of an effort that we started last year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields is absent. Ms. Russo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata is absent. Mr. Frisoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Patirney?
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Aye.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Twelve aye, three absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution Forty-two dash twenty-two, sponsors Legislature. Let's see, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Department of Health for the childhood-led poisoning prevention program.
Any discussion?